Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, October 24, 2019 Monthly Meeting. Members of the Board, you've seen the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Cox. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Ogwin. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. The agenda is approved. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to our visitors and of course, members of the Board. We're going to begin our meeting as we always do with a moment of silence, which may be used by those in attendance for a moment of personal reflection, prayer or meditation, and that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance if you'd please stand for that moment of silence. And that concludes our moment of silence. I'd now like to introduce Carla Scott, the Principal of Dunbarthon Elementary School, who will come forward and introduce some students who will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to introduce the following students who are representing our Student Life House team from Dunbarthon Elementary. Kensington Oust, Marchesa Johnson, Simi Akanola, and Demi Akanola. Will you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, students, and you may be seated. And we're going to take a moment to greet the students. If you all want to come up here and have a chance to say hello. And then we'll be joining the audience for our performance highlight in just a moment. And as we're making our way to seats for the performance highlight, I would like to introduce some visitors who are with us tonight. We have Ms. Carrie Humphrey and her American Sign Language Interpreter Education Class from J. Sergeant Reynolds Community College with us this evening in the back of the auditorium. They joined us at our last School Board Monthly Meeting and are joining us again to practice their interpreting skills. We're pleased to have them with us, so welcome.
All right, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Dr. Cashwell, colleagues, parents, and guests. My name is Christopher Mosley. I'm the Education Specialist for Performing Arts, and it's my distinct pleasure to introduce for our performance highlight this evening the Moody Middle School Advanced Women's Choir under the direction of Mr. Tim Drummond. Mr. Drummond has taught at Moody for the last five years. In that time, he has nearly doubled the size of the choir program, and Moody has been recognized by the Virginia Music Educators Association as a Blue Ribbon School three times. Next month, Mr. Drummond and the Advanced Women Choir will present a concert at the Virginia Music Educators Association Conference for hundreds of music educators at The Homestead in Hot Springs, Virginia. That is so exciting. Tonight, we have in attendance their very proud principal, Ms. Denise Das. Could you please stand and be recognized? And now, please help me welcome to the stage the Moody Middle School Advanced Women's Choir.
Have you seen the front? If not, look.
(singing) We have school shall rise, our hearts sing. The winter of the world is in tassest, our mist is with rain. The waters blue inside the gossips, proud young forests sheltered open their eyes. Our hills and lands as they swell. By some greaters to bonds they yield, where elder turtles sun themselves on a little shield. Only the mountains as it was, are true, are true, are true. Things to every soul, these things to every soul. But certain fields of the charging swash, in them, in certain hills, are more shields, or are they dragon's teeth? Are you, are you, from the mind, you rest your dapper sheen? And yet, how sweet we nurture hills, how sweet we nurture hills, how strong we, and, oh, yet. honey's uppour. My roots are earth, muddy river and honey's uppour. Sturdy and rigid, my fondness place. I share a sister wood with the amber grasses. My dreams wide endlessly, like a cut to in July. I share a sister wood with the amber grasses. My dreams wide endlessly, no fear in sight. In nature, in thy youth. All the forest was possible, the forest was possible, the pasture was my own, all the pasture was my own. My mother told me, I was beautiful. And I believe in my children's pride. There is no doubt in a pond, insecurity does not grow in a meadow. It will not sprout beneath the southern buds. It is planted by the boys on the school bus, tended by the words of small minds, and words may wound you. But are they true? You are beautiful, you are enough. You must believe in that, believe the truth. My roots are earth, muddy river and honey's uppour. My roots are beautiful, my roots are strong.
recognize our NACO and VACO, which stands for National Association of Counties and Virginia Association of Counties Achievement Award winners. This is what we know as a good problem to have because thirteen different schools and individuals and efforts are being recognized at our School Board Meeting this evening. When I call your names, if you would please, come to the front of the room to be recognized. First, to recognize the Alex Project at Donahoe Elementary School, Rebecca Roper and Stephanie Williams, please come forward. And as they do that, I will get real close to this microphone, which I think is a little low today. But before the creation of the Alex Project, Donahoe Elementary School had few regular volunteers working right up front, please uncomfortably in front. A group of caring volunteers joined forces and created the initiative, and since then, the innovative program has paired one or two weekly adult volunteers with each class at the school to provide academic and emotional support. It is named for Alex Moore, who died days before his graduation as a new sheriff's deputy. Rebecca Roper, the former principal at Donahoe, now at Ridge, and Stephanie Williams, the current principal at Donahoe. Congratulations. Now to recognize the three Es of K-12 education, enrolled, enlisted, and/or employed from our CTE Career and Technical Education Department, may I have Mac Baiton, the Director of Career and Technical Education. Mac, come on down. Henrico Schools wants students to graduate with the Triple E status, enrolled, enlisted, and/or employed. By beginning with the end goal in mind, all students should graduate with a plan in place to help them be successful. This plan starts in middle school and is monitored to ensure students are receiving the education that will prepare them for their career goals. This makes a student's school career from middle school to high school to post-secondary education a more seamless process. Mac and all of CTE, congratulations. Making peer socialization a snap from our Exceptional Education Department, may I have Director Donnis Davenport, Kristen Pepper, and Erin Weal. In 2017, Henrico Schools launched a summer program called SNAPS, an acronym for Students Navigating Appropriate Peer Socialization. SNAPS is geared towards students with high-functioning autism who struggle with everyday social skills. They learn and practice social skills in the classroom and during real-world opportunities with age-appropriate peers at local parks, community shopping centers, eateries, and nursing facilities. This effort was one of two also recognized not only with a NACO Award but a VACO Award. Donnis, Kristen, and Erin, Building book nooks, a community, building community literacy with Career and Technical Education and Library Services. Mac, don't go too far. In fact, you ought to stay real close to the front of the room. And Dan Fance at Stuks and Mary Beth Joyner with Library Services and CTE. I'll tell you a little bit about them. Public libraries and neighborhood schools do an amazing job in literacy development but can leave gaps in providing reading material to citizens. Not everyone lives near a public library branch, and public libraries are only open during the school day and are limited to students who attend. That is the schools, that is. In an effort to make reading material more readily available, our Department of CTE and Library Services teamed up to install small book nooks, tiny lending libraries with hinged doors on posts outside of all HCPS schools. Mac and Mary Beth, congratulations. A conference room renovation meets needs of students and their school. Also from CTE, Chip Coker, carpentry teacher, Arnett Person, masonry teacher, Kent Harrison, electricity teacher, and BJ Crowder, principal of the ACE Center at Highland Springs, come on, come on up if you would. Highland Springs High School's conference room lacked sufficient meeting space for larger groups. The electricity, carpentry, and masonry departments within the Advanced Career Education Center at Highland Springs guided their students to make trade theory a reality as they collaborated to create a new community room for the school. Students researched building codes and safety procedures, set goals, and created blueprints and timetables. They used their skills to complete most of the project at a cost of $1,400 instead of the $12,000 to $18,000 that contractors would have charged. Chip, Arnett, Kent, BJ, congratulations. Where's Mac Baiton? Setting the bar high, CTE Letter of Intent Signing Day. HCPS's Career and Technical Letter Intent Signing Day recognizes and celebrates high school students who complete a career and technical education program and are offered positions in the workforce. The event emulates ceremonies that have become common for high school athletes signing letters of intent to play for NCAA programs. Students and representatives of their future employers now sign symbolic letters of agreement as families and members of the media look on. Local TV stations and newspapers conduct interviews with the students, parents, and business representatives, and national news outlets broadcast stories of our very own event. CTE Signing Day was also one of two HCPS winners nominated on a state and national level. Once again, Mac Baiton and all of CTE, congratulations. Mac's the next one, too. We can just, we should have done all of Mac's in a row. All right. Partnership with Roofing Professionals gives students a broader career view. Come on, yeah. And to be fair, Mac would be the first one to tell you that he represents a lot of good, hard-working people in the organization. As with other skilled trade professions, the roofing industry is experiencing a national shortage of skilled labor. Many businesses would love to hire a recent high school graduate and help them grow into a successful employee in a rewarding career. Henrico Schools paired with an industry group to help find solutions to this dilemma. On the momentum of CTE Signing Day, we partnered with the Virginia Association of Roofing Professionals to create meaningful experiences and help educate students about opportunities in the roofing industry. Mac and CTE, once again, congratulations. Terry Alsbrook, let's give Mac a break. You can come up for this next one. Driven for Success: A New Kind of Open House, also part of our CTE program. Automotive Technology Instructors at the ACE Center of Hermitage decided they needed a fresh program to spark the interest of students, families, business owners, car dealerships, and post-secondary schools in career advancement for the automotive industry. They also wanted a program to serve as a means of increasing local businesses' interest in hiring our students and allowing businesses to serve as support systems rather than just waiting for students to join their business. The center developed an all-inclusive open house, which has realized these goals and experienced great success. Terry, congratulations. Also out of our CTE, helping first responders and visitors find their way, Rob Doolidge, Systems Manufacturing Teacher. Why don't you come on up to the room. Also, eighth-grade students Nicole, Aiden, Ally, Sir John, and Allison, if you know, if you heard your name called, come on up to the front of the room. The Technology Education Pumas Club at Short Pump Middle School worked with administrators to make the school safer and easier to navigate, particularly for first responders and visitors. Student design teams worked with their teacher to create signs for use throughout the school. Students used 3D printing, cylindrical machine cutting, and assembly line techniques to design, fabricate, and install new door signs for every room at the school. Rob, Nicole, Aiden, Ally, Sir John, and Allison, congratulations. Nicely done. Only 25 more to go. Learning Carpentry while supporting a local elementary school, this is Mac Baiton, Jessie Casey, and Barry Martin from our Career and Technical Education. Carpentry students at the Academy of Virginia Randolph, after learning safety procedures and how to work with their hands, worked together to help Lakeside Elementary School. Lakeside faces a challenge of limited storage space for its many extracurricular programs. The Virginia Randolph students were able to learn and develop skills while constructing a shed to increase Lakeside's storage capacity. Mac, Jessie, and Barry, nice job. Congratulations. Specialty Center Partnership Shares Expertise, Bob Kaufman at the ACE Center at Highland Springs, Heidi Kraft at Verina High School, Anne Marie Sealy, the principal of Verina High School, and once again, BJ Crowder from ACE at Highland Springs. Two centers, the ACE Center at Highland Springs and the Center for Communications and Media Relations of Verina High School, paired up to create a collaborative four-week project. The Verina Center offers limited coursework in audio production. Because students at Verina wanted the opportunity to learn the history and usability of audio production, the center created a partnership with the ACE Center that allowed one of the ACE Center's instructors to teach a four-week mini-session on that very topic. The project also enabled the students at the ACE Center at Highland Springs to serve as mentors. Bob, Heidi, and BJ, nice job. Congratulations. A Practical Nursing School collaborates for a healthier community, a partnership of Henrico County and St. Mary's Hospital of Practical Nursing. Jennifer McCrickert, Education Specialist with Health and Medical Services, come on up. As a part of Henrico County Public Schools, the mission of the School Division's Practical Nursing Program is to prepare nurses to provide people with safe, effective, and culturally competent nursing care. The program formed an affiliation with the Nation's Foundation to provide education and information related to HIV prevention and overall health and wellness while inspiring the community to take responsibility for its health. Jennifer, And last but not least, let's bring up two people one more time. Mac Baiton, our Director of Career and Technical Education, and Terry Alsbrook, the principal at the ACE Center at Hermitage for Tech the Halls, Reaching Our Community with a Holiday Event. Tech the Halls is a holiday event created by the ACE Center at Hermitage to bring the community together and share some of the center's career and technical education programs. The event took an unconventional approach to creating awareness of the ACE Center's offerings. Visitors learned about ACE Center programs while experiencing interactive activities such as health checks, CPR, and first aid demonstrations, human service activities, kid-friendly activities, a petting zoo, and auto winterization checks. Mac and Terry, you're done for the night. Thank you and congratulations. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for indulging us. It is a good thing when we can recognize so many different schools, efforts, and individuals. One more time, a round of applause for all of our NACO and VACO Award winners.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, and Dr. Cashwell. My name is Scott Thorpe, one of the Directors of Elementary Education, and tonight, we are honored to introduce two new Associate Principals at the elementary level. First, it is my pleasure to introduce the new Associate Principal of Jacob Adams Elementary School, Ms. Katie Ms. Taylor earned her bachelor's degree from Radford University and started her teaching career as a grade-three teacher at Sutherland Elementary School in Dinwiddie, Virginia. Katie then transitioned to teaching in Henrico County, where she impacted teaching and learning at Highland Springs Elementary School for three years. After earning her master's degree in public school administration from the University of Richmond, Ms. Taylor embarked on several leadership opportunities, including being a Summer Academy Site Coordinator at two schools. Katie has served as a resource teacher at Glen Allen Elementary School, and most recently, she served Greenwood Elementary School, students, staff, and community in the role of Associate Principal. We join the Jacob Adams Gator Community in congratulating Ms. Katie Taylor on her appointment to Associate Principal at Adams Elementary School.
Thank you so much, Mr. Thorpe. I'm so excited to go on this endeavor with Jacob L. Adams Elementary and to become a Gator again. I'm very excited to be in Henrico as well. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm proudly joined tonight by my amazing principal, Ms. Tawanna Lowry, as well as my boyfriend and my parents. Thank you again for this
We are excited to welcome the new Associate Principal of Holiday Elementary School, Mrs. Mrs. Williams earned her bachelor's degree from Liberty University. She attained her master's degree in school administration and supervision from the American College of Education. Melissa began her teaching career as an exceptional education teacher in Richmond City Public Schools, and Mrs. Williams served students and teams in Henrico, Alexandria, and Chesterfield Counties before finding her way into leadership, serving as an elementary assistant principal in Charlottesville City Public Schools. in Charlottesville City Public Schools. We join the Holiday Elementary Community in being excited about Mrs. Williams' appointment to Associate Principal of Holiday Elementary School.
Good evening. I would like to start by acknowledging my family, who I love, who is here tonight to give up their time to support me. I am truly, truly grateful. I am excited, elated, overjoyed at the opportunity to return to Henrico County and be at Holiday in a new capacity now in Henrico. I've been at Holiday for a total of nine academic days now, and I can truly say that I feel like I'm at home. I look forward to the days ahead, continuing to work with our community, with the Henrico County community as a whole, Holiday Elementary, our family, our students, and seeing what's going to happen. And I am expecting awesome things, and I look forward to being a member of the team.
Mr. Chairman, members of the school board, Dr. Cashwell, colleagues, and special guests. My name is Mike Dussault. I am the Director of Teaching, Learning, and Innovation. It is my pleasure to introduce the newest member of the Teaching, Learning, and Innovation Team, Dr. Christina Saunders, in the role of Elementary English Language Specialist. Dr. Saunders earned her bachelor's degree from UVA in Marketing and Finance, a master's in Education from George Mason, an EDS as a reading specialist from UVA, and her PhD from VCU. Dr. Saunders has a wide range of teaching experiences in Frederick City Schools, Henrico County Public Schools, and Hanover Public Schools. Her most recent experience has been at Gandy Elementary in Hanover County, where she served proudly as the reading specialist. In that role, Dr. Saunders became a district literacy leader through specific workshops and trainings for struggling readers and English language students. In 2014, Hanover recognized Dr. Saunders as their Teacher of the Year. Dr. Saunders has represented at a variety of state conferences and also served as an adjunct professor at VCU and the University of Richmond. We're extremely excited to bring Dr. Saunders' deep content, knowledge, and creativity to our Teaching and Learning Innovation Department to continue our work on establishing solid reading foundation for all students. Welcome back to the Henrico family, Dr. Saunders.
Thanks, thank you. It's really great to be coming back to Henrico. It's been almost 18 years since I've been in Henrico, so I feel like I'm coming home, and I'm very excited to join the Teaching, Learning, and Innovation Team, and I look forward to working with all elementary schools to build our reading programs. Thanks.
All right. It was a pleasure to get to meet some of our new administrative appointees, but Mr. Chairman and members of the board, at this time, I'm pleased to share highlights from the past month in Henrico County Public Schools. So if you would direct your attention to the screens, you'll see examples of life-ready learning, community-supported opportunities, and students getting an early look at potential careers after high school. Enjoy. Fall is underway, and schools all over the county are vigorously using the Henrico learner profile in their daily routines. Let's start at Jackson Davis Elementary, where first graders worked in teams to design a home for pigeons that would withstand the winter weather. At Colonial Trail, students were learning about adapting to the environment. They came up with a new species and evaluated its potential for survival. Math classes took some creative approaches as well. At Carver Elementary, students made stop-motion animations to illustrate the order process. While at Donahoe, a fourth-grade classroom was transformed into the Decimal Diner, where students used math skills to place their orders while trying to stay on budget. Chemistry class was hands-on at Deep Run, as young scientists experimented with the different states of matter. Students at Chamberlain Elementary learned about other cultures as they tried out some steps of a Russian folk dance. There was quiet time at Henrico High School. Dozens gathered in the library for a silent reading party. Over at Brooklyn Middle School, students were singing about the Constitution. The song's lyrics help explain this historic document. Music was also the theme at Short Pump Elementary. As part of a jazz lesson, fifth graders invited Trombone Shorty to their school, and he accepted to the students' delight. Learning wasn't limited to our classrooms. Middle schoolers from all over the county visited VCU for Steam and Sports Day. This amazing event allows students to gain an understanding of how academics and athletics go hand in hand. At the Library of Virginia, high school students participated in the Equity Datathon Challenge, where Henrico had the only student-led teams impressing the crowd as they placed first and third at the event. Nearby at the State Capitol, it was a celebration of the women of Virginia history. They unveiled the Statue of Virginia Randolph, who is the namesake for two of our schools. Families and students had multiple opportunities to learn about career possibilities. Take, for example, the Life Ready Expo, with more than 150 businesses participating. Potential employees got to meet potential employers. There was also Mission Tomorrow, where students from all of our middle schools not only learned about potential careers, they got some hands-on experience on life in the working world. Students weren't the only ones learning. Staff from all our schools participated in professional development. A group from VCU shared a lesson using a virtual archaeology program. Others gained insight from Adif Carney, the Secretary of Education in Virginia. Here is the annual Henrico Marching Band Showcase, featuring performances of all of our talented schools, while helping raise money and supplies for the Henrico Christmas Mother. Teamwork is always on display with Friday Night Football, but a recent game at Verina had an added element. Students from the Verina High School Center for Communications and Media Relations streamed the game live with multiple cameras, replays, and commentary.
Not only does he get to the end zone, he just keeps on running to the track.
What's the game plan looking like for the second half?
So, as the old saying goes, the first five minutes of the second half would normally tell the outcome.
Thank you for joining us tonight with Verina. The final score was 35 to 7. That's all, folks.
Finally, amazing performances weren't limited to football. This is Challenger Day, the annual event where students enjoy some friendly competition with the support of a cheering crowd.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am superintendent, and all those who've shared as part of that review of the last month's work. That's, it's amazing what goes on each and every day, and to have it condensed into that video was really informative. So, thank you. Mrs. Augman, would you read our mission, please?
Be happy to. Henrico County Public Schools, an innovative leader in educational excellence, will actively engage our students in diverse educational, social, and civic learning experiences that inspire and empower them to become contributing citizens.
Thank you. Members of the audience, the next item on the agenda is a public forum. This is a time where citizens are invited to address the school board on any matter of concern about the division. Some citizens have signed up in advance with the school board clerk. We will follow that list first, and then anyone else who wishes to speak will come forward to the podium and do so after we've completed that list. We ask that each speaker come to the microphone and clearly state your name, your neighborhood, or your school affiliation. Once you've finished your, once you've finished your remarks, we ask that you write your name and contact information on the sign-in form that's located in the, on the table behind the microphone. And there's a box to check if you wish for someone to follow up with you. To assist you in tracking your time, there's a timekeeping system on the podium. Speakers will have a four-minute time limit. The light will be green as you begin your remarks. The yellow light means that you have one minute to go, and we ask that you stop speaking promptly when the light turns red out of respect for the other speakers. The school board is here tonight to hear from you, the community. The speaker shall speak directly to the board. We will not be responding to the speakers. We appreciate your attendance here this evening and providing your input. We do ask that you provide your information however so that a staff member may sign up. Before we get to the list, the, we have 13 people signed up tonight, and of course, there may be others as well, and those 13 people have indicated that the topic that they want to discuss is the redistricting that is going on now. So with that in mind, I've asked the superintendent, we've asked the superintendent to provide a little bit of an update from this afternoon's work session.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, and to those who have come to speak this evening regarding redistricting, as a, as a courtesy to you since you're just joining us, I wanted to bring you up to speed on some discussion that happened at the meeting just prior to this in our work session related to our capital improvement plan that's being proposed, as it has a number of factors related to it that could influence the redistricting process. And while we have a public message to go out on that, given your presence here, that means even if it has gone out, being that you may have been in transit and are joining us this evening, I wanted to bring you up to speed on what was shared. So as staff were sharing proposed capital improvement plans for the school board to consider as we look to put a capital improvement plan forward to the county government for funding, some of the considerations involve the addition of new facilities that would add capacity, particularly a new middle school in the Fairfield area, as well as in addition to a middle school in the Brooklyn area. So we know that we have some potential, oh, elementary school, I apologize. I know. I said I was going to mess that up, and I did. I apologize. And so with the addition of proposed new capacity, we know that that can influence plans that are underway with the Redistricting Committee, and so we are going to be sharing the information that was shared here this evening with the Redistricting Committee so that they can consider it as they continue to look at options for being able to fill that new capacity again. While that's a preliminary plan and it's being proposed and is not yet funded, it's something that, if brought to fruition, would again affect our communities, and we want to make sure that we're being proactive and planning ahead so that we're not redistricting our communities more than once. So should these projects be built out, we know that we would want to be able to account for that now as we're making plans, and so we're still at a good point in the redistricting process and that the committees are still looking at lots of options and gathering input. And so I'm sure you all know that while you certainly are welcome to share your input here, we also will be sharing the input that you share with us directly with our committee as they're really the group right now wrestling through those options. So I did want to bring you up to speed on that, as that was information that was newly shared through our capital improvement planning information session this evening.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cashwell. So what we will do is, as I mentioned, we have 13 folks signed up. So I'm going to call the first person and then go ahead and mention the second person, and if the second person I call would move up and just kind of be on deck, and I'll continue to march forward in that way. So our first speaker tonight will be Heather Walker, and Ms. Walker will be followed by Mike Yakub. And if I mispronounced someone's name, I'll just go ahead and apologize now.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, school board members, and Dr. Cashwell. My name is Heather Walker. I live in the Greenwood-Glen subdivision, and my children currently attend Greenwood Elementary School, and we are currently zoned for Hungry Creek and Glen Allen High School. I already said all this stuff that was there. I'm a concerned mother of two school-aged boys. Again, one, they both go to Greenwood Elementary right now, and I told you the trajectory. I'm also a public school teacher. I've taught for 21 years in a neighboring county, and my concern is with the way the redistricting is currently planned. One of the goals listed is to spread out the poverty in the county among the schools so as to reach more children in underfunded areas. I grew up in the city of Richmond, and I deeply value that focus on diversity of all types. Regarding economic diversity, Greenwood Elementary has a 45.6 percent, excuse me, 45.6 percent of the student body receive free or reduced lunch, and each child there is beautifully and lovingly served, mind, body, and spirit, by the faculty and staff. My children are learning with children of all backgrounds, and that matters to me greatly. At Hungry Creek, the average, the student population that takes free or reduced lunch is at 32 percent, and at Glen Allen, it's 20 percent. It's worth noting that this data is collected based on parameters that are a little bit different from elementary through high school based on brain development and all of that. So it is very fair to say that the poverty is a little more balanced that way. This set of schools is very balanced, I think, when it comes to that. By the majority of the current maps, about 25 percent of Greenwood Elementary would be sent separately to Brooklyn Middle from Hungry Creek and from the rest of their peers. This equates to about 40 students or so. From the teaching angle, I cannot express strongly enough how challenging the adjustment from fifth to sixth grade is for a student. I've taught both middle, and I currently teach high school. It is the hardest transition in the kindergarten through 12th grade timeline. Separating kids at this time will directly affect their emotional and academic development. Mr. Stein at Greenwood and Mr. Moose at Hungry Creek have worked so diligently to create a K-8 concept between those two schools, and it has made an enormous difference for many, many children. I ask that you recognize the amazing work of these men and treat it as a pilot program, allowing it to remain in place and use it as an example and expectation for other feeder systems. In addition to the K-8 continuum, Mr. Stein has invited students from Glen Allen High School to come down on Monday mornings to greet and tutor, mentor, and motivate these kids. They see themselves as gators, as cougars, and as jaguars. This connection is vital to their success. Greenwood-Glen is a small neighborhood. We're nested near Woodman and Greenwood Road. We don't have a lot of homes or tons of kids. The vast majority of our community building happens in the schools where we attend. We are deeply devoted to all of the students at Greenwood, and we intend to help them achieve success all the way through high school. I'm going to skip because my light's yellow. This is our community. We help make it what it is in all of our linguistic and ethnic and economic diversity, and we need to stay together. In summary, I ask that you consider the fact that there is already wonderful economic, racial, religious, and linguistic diversity in place in our feeder pattern. Our boundaries are already very clear in the eastern side with Route 1, I-95, and I-295 as the dividers, and our neighborhood has helped create and support the sense of community within Greenwood Elementary, Hungry Creek Middle, and Glen Allen High School. I ask that you ask the committees to consider presenting a map with an alternative plan that keeps us in our current feeder system.
Thank you. Perfect timing. Mr. Yakub will be followed by Yael Levin Sheldon. Probably did that poorly, but go ahead, please, Mr. Yakub.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Mike Yakub from the Greenwood-Glen subdivision in Glen Allen. I'm proud father of two beautiful girls attending Henrico County Public School, one daughter attending Greenwood Elementary, and one daughter attending Hungry Creek Middle. I'm very concerned about the proposed boundary line change and the effect that will have on the school that my children attend, the substantial need to maintain the development and improvement along the Route 1 corridor. We have been told repeatedly that there is buyer for Virginia Center Commons Mall, but this, this agreement is based on the development and the consistency among the Greenwood-Glen and Magnolia Ridge and River Milk community. To address guideline one, we are currently zoned with natural boundaries of Route 1, Interstate 295, and Interstate 95. The schools of this area change. We run the risk of not maintaining the population as it is and risking our children's future and for the VCC plan, business plan development. We are part of larger community that's connected through Greenwood Elementary and Hungry Creek Middle and Glen Allen High that direct address us to guidelines two, which states that geographic zones should minimize the division of creative minds and the connected community. I'm really asking you to look at the redistricting plan from every angle to this truly the best decision for the education of our children, our current property's value, and property development of our area, and for the improvement for all our county. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. So after our, go ahead, please. I have Ms. Levine Sheldon. Okay, I'm sorry I mispronounced your name, I'm sure. And she will And she will be followed by Del Sherry Shines. Thank you, Ms. Shines. Please go.
Hi, I'm Yael, and I'm also from Greenwood-Glen, but I think I am representing Greenwood-Glen, Magnolia Ridge, and River Mill. I would like to, I think I've, you all have received the petition we've put together on change.org. I sent it to all of you. And as of an hour ago, we have 571 signatures, so I plead, I ask you please to take us seriously. The signatures will grow. As of now, the current options, there is no single option that leaves us where we are, and that is very concerning to us. As of last night, there was option number six that put all of Greenwood going to Brooklyn Middle School and then to Hermitage, and that was an option we could actually live with. But separating just 40 or 50 children from Greenwood and sending them to a different middle school, we find completely unacceptable and very, very harmful academically and socially to our children. The same goes for middle school kids who are supposed to go from Hungry Creek to Glen Allen and instead going to Hermitage. They will know, they will have no friends, they will know, will not know enough children, and we believe it's harmful academically and socially. Heather mentioned K through eight continuity, and I would like to stress K through 12 continuity. My boys, when this takes effect, will be going into ninth and seventh grade. That means my youngest son will be starting sixth grade at Hungry Creek Middle School and then have to switch middle schools. That's starting middle school all over again. Him and his friends will have to start middle school all over again. I would like you to put yourselves in a sit, in the, in the position of a seven, a rising seventh grader and think, what is it, what is it like to start in one school and then a year later have to switch and start all over again in the most challenging transition time in your K through 12 experience? My last point is the timing of this. I really want to ask you, why now? Why now? Because three of the five, of the five of you are going to be stepping down. Two might be replaced, two of you might be replaced. That means the majority of the school board is going to be different come January. That means from January to May 14th, I think, is the vote on this, they will have just over four months to study this issue, to study the maps, to study the schools. I don't think that's enough time to make a decision on the fate of so many students. And my last request is that you please also take input from the principals of all these schools you're going to affect, because of all people, they should get a say in what's going to happen to the students. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Shines, and Ms. Shines will be followed by Sarah Taylor, please, if Ms. Taylor would come forward. Please, Ms. Shines.
Good evening. My name is Del Sherry Shines, and I'm a resident of Magnolia Ridge neighborhood. My purpose being here this evening is to first advocate for my son and the rest of the children of Magnolia Ridge, Greenwood-Glen, and River Mill communities. Appeal, and secondly, to appeal to the board regarding the current redistricting options for 2021. I understand the need to redistrict neighborhoods in an effort to level the playing field for all students, but I have great concern on whether all aspects are being considered. The proposed option would change my son's early education trajectory from attending higher performing schools to significantly lower performing schools for his middle school and high school years. These were my most vulnerable years in school, and it helped shape my overall experience and relationships to this day. As we all know, middle school and high school are the times in your early life where you try to identify and fit in with your crowd or either your tribe. This concerns me personally as a parent, because I was once a student attending Everest Middle Schools and high schools in the city, and it deeply affected me on a mental level, and it hardened me as my personality, and which ultimately led to multiple discipline issues with me over several years, even having to go before the school board to see whether I can return to Richmond Public Schools. I feel like I've lived, I've lived this personally firsthand, and I do not want the same experience for my now seven-year-old impressionable son. This is bigger than an attendance and overcrowded class issue. It is an environmental, it is an environmental issue, and pouring more children into an already stressed environment will only exasperate the issue and strain our current resources. In reviewing online data, Brooklyn Middle School has a higher level of violent incidents, and I understand that incidents can and will happen in any school, but in comparison to Hungry Creek, the current middle school zone for my neighborhood, Brooklyn has a much higher record. The test scores were also lower, and the academic progress from grade to grade was lower than other schools in comparison. The neighborhoods of Magnolia Ridge, Greenwood-Glen, and River Mill have collectively worked together to voice our opinions to every outlet made available to us. At the meetings held at the beginning of October, I asked the facilitator at the committee if the committee was considering the feedback given by the community when drawing the maps and determining zoning, and the answer I received was yes. Magnolia Ridge was one of the biggest communities, which had the largest comment thread. However, to my surprise, each option that has been populated has continuously excluded our neighborhoods from the plans to keep us in our current zone schools. Our appeals seem to be ignored even when we voice, voice the most concerns. It doesn't seem as if our concerns are getting any attention or consideration, and it almost looks like it's a done deal. I'm appealing to you this evening to ask that more options are drawn, which considers keeping our children together in the Hungry Creek and Glen Allen school zones, which directly supports the K through 12 continuity. Note, this does not give a guarantee that my child or any other child won't experience the hardships of school throughout their years, but it does offer a more controlled environment through their journey. I'm in no way saying that Brooklyn's Middle School or Hermitage does not produce great kids. I know many of the kids that go there. Some are even in my family. However, I do know firsthand some of the struggles that they've dealt with as parents and some of the struggles that the kids had to deal with day to day. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Taylor will be followed by Ashley Lewis, please. Ms. Lewis will follow Ms. Taylor. Ms. Taylor, please.
Good afternoon, lady and gentleman. I actually had a lot written. You guys have done such a great job, already kind of calling out the key points. Woo! My name is Sarah Cheek. Actually, I'm living Magnolia Ridge. My children both go to Greenwood Elementary. I have a fifth grader hopefully on her way to Hungry Creek. I wanted to talk a little bit about where we are as a society, right, as a nation. I think about my neighborhood growing up, and what made the neighborhood great, it was that community, right? Coming home, getting off the school bus, knowing if Mama wasn't home, Ms. Johnson was gonna pick me up, and the rest of the kids take us to her house, give us a snack, feed us. And we all knew each other. We kind of worked together. If there was one child that had an issue, all the parents kind of pulled together for the, for the betterment of that child. I've been in Magnolia Ridge for three years. I was very specific when moving to this neighborhood, looking for a community that was super diverse religiously, financially, racially, and that's what we're getting today. And the vulnerability of moving to middle school, moving to high school, and not having that Ms. Johnson across the street picking your kid up in your moment of need, because our kids are split and going to different middle schools, is like a huge concern for me. So I'm not gonna repeat everything that folks are saying today, but I really want to drive home the message of the village, right? And then my second point is, a lot of the options are really a Band-Aid to the problems that we're seeing in Brooklyn Middle School, right? So there's a lot more research and effort that needs to go into understanding fundamentally what the issues are in that school, and really digging in that community and putting together programs that can pull in community involvement, pull in parental involvement, and woo-hoo. And I think someone spoke very eloquently about how our principal at Greenwood Elementary School has pulled in Hungry Creek Middle School's principal and the high school to really, again, create that environment where our kids are not only successful in elementary, but, but increasing their chances of having success as they move through middle and high school. So again, just, just want to make sure that there's a lot of options on the table. Splitting our kids, there's a huge detriment to that vulnerable time in their lives when they're discovering who they are. At the age of 12, there's a lot of research that says your peer group becomes your, your greatest influence. So keeping them together, again, will improve, hopefully, the outcome of their success through middle and high school. So that's kind of what I wanted to say. So go village! Woo!
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Lewis, will be followed by Lauren Bates Rowe.
Good evening. I'm Ashley Lewis. I live in River Mill. Just wanted to share an experience with you. My daughter attended Brooklyn Middle School for the past two years, now attending Hungry Creek. There are stark differences between these schools. We moved her from Brooklyn Middle because of the concerns that we had. We wanted to improve her learning environment academically and socially. She expressed frustration at Brooklyn that she was bored in her classes because more time was spent on material that she already knew. There was not a challenge for her at Brooklyn. She was a student in advanced classes at Brooklyn and is now a student at advanced classes at Hungry Creek. She's more challenged and more focused than she ever has been. We don't want to send her back to where she was and where she had an idle mind. We all know what can happen to those with idle minds. The current schools that Greenwood-Glen, Magnolia Ridge, and River Mill are districted for should not be changed. These communities are close-knit with surrounding Glen Allen communities and therefore should not be removed for the schools that are slotted for Glen Allen residents. If the county has a goal to decrease concentration levels of poverty in schools, they need to help students from within. Same goes for struggling with academics. Adding children to an already struggling population will not help. This will just drown out and cover up the problems. That does not represent an action that is in compliance with the No Child Left Behind Act. Help those who need help from the inside. Looking at Henrico County, the largest concentration of poverty gap is in the western Henrico area, such as Short Pump. Why not start with the largest gap and then work downward as needed? It seems like the county is trying to make this change to improve SOL scores in the struggling schools. Why not provide those schools, the teachers and students both, with the resources that they need to internally succeed first? I'm saying this because I don't believe that the goal of decreasing poverty concentration is valid. There is not significant research to support that this is impacting education. Capacity has been a concern for some. This, too, is something not, with not enough reputable, reputable research to present, present to be supported. Our schools are thriving and doing well at the current capacity. The proposed schools that you are considering redistricting us to are under capacity and struggling academically. This takes me back to, it takes me back to fixing things from within. Instead of adding more to the existing problem, things need to be fixed within first. If any of you have a desire for your child to be in a smaller class, then you're welcome to send them to the undercapacity schools and let us remain where we are. Unless you're willing to consider these options for your own children, please do not consider them for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. So our next speaker will be Lauren Bates Rowe. Lauren Bates Rowe, and I'm not sure, and so we also have Catherine Schuffenbain? Schuffenbain? Oh, I did that terribly. Is there, is there anyone named Catherine who wants to speak? How about Damon Nana Yocara? Would you please pronounce your name for me? Are you Damon?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And Damon will be followed by Marcy Stevens, please.
Yep.
Please pronounce your last name for me.
Nana Yocara.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
So thank you for giving me the time. I think we have a lot of folks speaking in our communities. So I'm from Magnolia Ridge, and we are concerned about the rezoning options that have been laid out for, from going from Greenwood to Hungry Creek to Glen Allen High. Now, I moved, moved into the Magnolia Ridge area this year, right? We were really looking for a new house, and because my daughter was moving into the middle school, Henrico Middle School, we really did not want to change it. We, we really wanted to stay in that same community. And, you know, it really narrowed down our options, but we never moved back, and that's what commitment we have as parents when we see that what we have to do for our kids. So when I heard, you know, this, this happened, the rezoning options that were brought up, you know, that there was options, I think, one or two years back, where, you know, this, I thought that everything was settled, but then two years again later, this, the same neighborhoods are being impacted again by rezoning. And I, I know that I've been talking with all, like, the, the people who are impacted in my, my communities, and they are having a lot of stress, right? This is affecting their children, right? It's a, it's a big stress on the community right now. There's so much worry, right? I know there's, it is depressing for, for us as well, why this, we had to go through this again, right? You know, there's a lot of diversity and inclusivity, as, as folks mentioned, and continuity is a key thing. You know, kids love it in Greenwood, and, you know, my eldest daughter loves Hungry Creek, and we hope that we can, you know, have my youngest kids also continuing in that. And what, one thing about, you know, we are not really, you know, Brooklyn is a middle school. I know that it has improved, and I know the county is doing a lot of things, but at the same time, what we feel is that if you are trying to put more kids into a school that already has problems, right? And yes, we've spoken to, you know, some people have spoken to teachers there in the school as well. So if we are trying to solve the problem of overcrowding in one school, Hungry Creek, and trying to move them into this school where there's already a problem there, you know, I really don't see how it can be a solution, right, rather than, you know, just pushing out the problem. And we really request that you really consider that, you know, an option that will really be fair to everyone, right? That will not negatively impact whoever, how many kids it is. We hope that you will consider something that is fair to all the kids. So that's what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Marcy Stevens, followed by Gina Blackwell.
I have some. I'm sorry I didn't have enough handouts for everyone. Good evening. I'm here tonight representing 17 homes on Rudwick Road. We are here requesting assistance with a concern about option three and option five in the redistricting proposals. We have submitted comments on the redistricting page but have not seen any updates or changes to our issue. In both these options, a secondary road, Rudwick Road, is divided. This road is half a mile long and has a total of 34 houses on it. It's a small, non-primary road, and there are several concerns with this division. Number one, per procedural guidelines, all reasonable efforts should be made to assure continuous geographic zones and minimize the separation of clearly identifiable community components, apartment buildings, and residential subdivisions. This would divide a community as well as students on the same non-primary street that have attended the same school for years. The affected area currently has 17 homes, including five households with children in the Henrico County school system. Number two, per procedural guidelines, efforts should be made to ensure an efficient system of division-provided transportation. A bus would have to come from both Brooklyn and Hungry Creek, as well as Hermitage and Glen Allen, to the same intersection on this small road. The school bus stop for the affected homes is in the part of Rudwick Road that is not affected. Number three, per procedural guidelines, major roads and natural boundaries will be used whenever feasible as a zone line. Please refer to the handouts showing the two views of this issue. In this case, no major road or natural boundary was used. If option three or option five were approved without this issue resolved, the additional buses would have to deviate from Woodman Road to pick up only seven students in middle and high school as the surrounding areas are not affected. In conclusion, there are seven children residing in this section of Rudwick Road that would be affected by redistricting. It would mean that they would not attend school with their surrounding peers, creating a separation for these students. Also, three of the seven students are in gifted services. This would change and alter their academic track. Note, in these Note, in these options, the affected part of Rudwick Road does not show a name on the road, which may have been confusing for those designing the boundaries. We would request that Rudwick Road not be divided and remain in its current school zone as a whole. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Our next speaker is Ms. Blackwell, who will be followed by Larissa Rodriguez.
Hi, my name is Gina Blackwell, and I live in the River Mill District. We moved to this area specifically so that our kids could go to Greenwood Elementary, Hungry Creek, and Glen Allen. And I know the committees aren't supposed to take that into consideration, but how is that in the best interest to not? Because I took it into consideration when I moved there. I'm trying to do what's best for my children, and the committee is taking that away from me. The committee has put out six options, and not a single option lets our children continue to go to their schools. The secondary committee meetings have been told of our concern to keep our kids together, but when it comes to designing the maps, they don't seem to be taking our concerns into consideration. If it's supposed to be a fair process, then it is only fair that the committee makes at least one to two more options to allow this. Maybe our neighborhoods shouldn't have been zoned for Greenwood, Hungry Creek, and Glen Allen, but they were, and they should stay that way. And as you are aware, the principals of the three schools work very hard to establish a relationship with each other. By splitting up the schools, you will ostracize the children who don't get to feed from Greenwood to Hungry Creek to Glen Allen, and that is definitely not in the best interest of the children. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Rodriguez, followed by Jennifer Brown. Jennifer Brown will be our next speaker.
I currently live in the Verona District, but my daughter goes to private school. So hi, my name's Larissa Rodriguez, and I'm a 34-year resident of eastern Henrico. I attended Mayford, Verona Elementary, Rolf, and Verona High School graduating in 2001. After college, my husband and I built a home in eastern Henrico where we have resided for the past 11 years. I'm a loyal, law-abiding resident who not only lives but also works as a registered nurse in Henrico County. We've been saving for 11 years in order for us to move to a better school district. We began looking at River Mill in 2016 with two main attractions leading us to the area, a closer location to where we work, and most importantly, a better school district for our two girls. It was advertised that our children would have the option to attend top-rated, award-winning Henrico County public schools. This redistricting now poses an imminent threat to that reality and to the quality of the public education our daughters would receive if we proceed with this move. In every proposed plan for redistricting, the middle school and high school are now Brooklyn and Hermitage. Both schools rank below average academically, Brooklyn not currently fully accredited, and we already live in Verona where Rolf is in as well. Finding these facts actually led me to think about the bigger issue in the county. Where are the resources being placed? The schools I attended as a child, the schools I made fond memories in and lifelong friendships are in worse condition than when I graduated. I'm embarrassed that it's actually taken this course of events for me to research and feel motivated to take action to advocate for the community. But when it comes to the education of my children, I have a strong vested interest in ensuring that they develop a love of learning at a young age and it's nurtured and supported. An argument is posed that residents are concerned about further overcrowding in already overcrowded schools. Why wasn't this issue considered before the River Mill community was developed? The Board of Supervisors approved this community in 2016. Why didn't they do something then? Why have only two high schools been built in the county since I graduated in 2001 with the growth of over 57,000 people during that time? Every year, the population has grown, and we did very little to prevent the overcrowding in all of our schools. I read that one of the reasons for this redistricting is to improve sociodemographic distributions of the population, but for who? My perception is that the Three Chop district residents are minimally affected by this proposed redistricting. It appears to me that the members of the community who reside in and around Short Pump and Deep Run get the better school district and will experience no change in demographics of their school population, whereas some will drastically change. Only three of the nine high schools are ranked above-average ratings in the entire county, and they are in Tuckahoe, Brooklyn, and Three Chop districts, again, which coincides with a wealthier sociodemographic area. The other schools have continued to drop in rank over the years. Who's assessing and providing resources in the right places to support the members of the county? In the meantime, I would respectfully ask the school board to reconsider redistricting River Mill out of the Hungry Creek and Glen Allen school district. Many of us have already signed contracts on homes under the premise that our children would have the opportunity to attend top-ranked schools in the county. This community has a high potential to reinvigorate the area around Virginia Center Commons. Many of my friends have resided to moving out of the county to neighboring counties, professionals, nurses, EMTs, teachers. They've moved to New Kent, Chesterfield, Hanover. Hanover's 24 schools are all accredited, the four high schools close in ranking. What's gone wrong in Henrico these past 18 years since I graduated? Why is there this polarity between the west-end and east-end schools in regards to quality? I want to continue to live in this county, but something has to change. Redistricting, in my humble opinion, is a Band-Aid and not the long-term solution this county's educational system needs. What we need is more schools for our growing population. We shouldn't be forced to place our children in private schools in order to ensure they get better student-teacher ratios and other resources.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jennifer Brown, and Ms. Brown will be followed by Nikki Donathan.
All right. Hi, my name's Jennifer Brown, and like everyone here, I'm from Magnolia Ridge and here today to discuss that. One of the things that I did want to bring up was in 2017, I stood at this exact podium, well, in my wheelchair, and addressed you guys, and said that we needed a new middle school in the VCC corridor. So I'm glad to hear that there's some thinking in there. Two years too late, because the last time I stood here, we were in the same boat. It was two years ago that we were fighting getting districted to Brooklyn or getting districted to Hungry Creek. And frankly, I've lived in the same, I've lived in the Route 1 area for 21 years. This is like the seventh time I've gone through this. It's getting tiring to have to fight for where my kids are going to go to school. They start kindergarten, I don't know where they're going to be in, you know, sixth grade, seventh grade. I do have a child who is in fourth grade at Greenwood, and I have a son in eighth grade, goodness, eighth grade, at Hungry Creek. I did want to bring up, and this is kind of more, my points are more kind of directed totally at the redistricting altogether, but it does apply to our schools, you know, that we are districted for. But the first thing that I wanted to bring up is breaking up the continuity of elementary to middle school and splitting up schools. Because I learned to cite my sources in school, there was a study out of UC Santa Barbara published in the American Journal of Education that talked about splitting elementary schools in the transition to middle school. And it said, "Frequent school changes associated with implementing, I'm sorry, implementing a comprehensive transition program can be beneficial for incoming middle school students, leading to an increase in student attendance, academic improvement, and a decrease in discipline referrals." I think this applies at Greenwood, which has been a single feeder school for years. As Mr. Stein, our principal, says, we are five houses and one family. I don't want to split one of those houses off and send them to a different middle school. It is very important. Greenwood is a very tight school. We are just all together, all in, and if you break off a piece of that, it's just not going to benefit any student at Greenwood, the ones who are leaving their friends and the ones who are going to a different school. Take Greenwood, put it all in one middle school. I don't care what middle school it is. A school is a building. Just put our kids together and keep them together, because obviously, our village will fight for what we need for our kids. So that's kind of my thing, and I think a lot of schools feel that way. Wow, I still have time. Okay. My other point had to do with the transition, this is once again countywide, between schools. And I think that the redistricting should only affect rising transitioning students, so students who are transitioning into kindergarten first, sixth grade, and ninth grade. And I ask that you guys take that into consideration for the sake of our students, because that will make their transition easier, sorry. And my final thing is to keep us at Glen Allen, because Glen Allen, we live in Glen Allen, the school's named after where we live, it was built, we were told, for where we live. We have to drive by it to get to Hermitage, so there really is no logical reason to move us to Hermitage. But that's my feelings.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker, and our last speaker who signed up is Ms. Donathan. And if there's any others who wish to speak, if you would just come down to the front row, we'll get you next.
Hello, my name is Nikki Donathan. I am the mom of two kids. My kids are currently zoned for Rivers Edge, Holman, and Glen Allen High School. I'm extremely concerned about the options that the redistricting committee has voted to move forward, to put in front of the public and in front of y'all. My neighborhood is the Cedars at Ensbroke. We live off of Sadler Road, very close to Ensbroke, as I said. However, both of the options would have my children attending Short Pump Middle and Deep Run High School. I can see how easy it would be for the redistricting committee to take the Sadler Road area and move it to another school. We are surrounded by major boundaries, and it's very easy to just take us and shift us all around. And if you look at their maps, it looks very easy to extend the boundary past I-295 and into Ensbroke. However, in order to drive to Short Pump Middle, you would have to go up Broad Street into Short Pump, a very highly accident-prone area, and you would go past Pocahontas Middle School, which is one street over on Three Chopped, or you would go up Knuckles Road, right past Holman, to get up there. It makes no sense for us to pass a middle school in either direction to get to Short Pump. Along those lines as well, the feeder pattern for Holman is Rivers Edge, Longan, Springfield Park, and Echo Lake. Most of those schools are on the same side of I-295. You would be taking the Sadler Road area, a small chunk, the only ones of us on that side of 295, and putting us into Short Pump. And that leads into the feeder pattern issues that all of these other parents have expressed. You're taking a small amount of the Rivers Edge students away from Holman and into Short Pump. In the 11 years that I have lived in my neighborhood, we have been up for grabs in the redistricting three times now. The previous two times also had us going into Short Pump. You may remember the Sadler Road t-shirts from a while back, "We're coming back." So in those previous two redistricting efforts, the school board has done the right thing and voted against any options that would have moved us from Holman into Short Pump. First, I'm asking that the redistricting committee, please vote forward one of the options that has our children staying at Holman. At least two of the previous draft options do have us staying at Holman. Second, I would ask that when the time comes for the school board to please do the right thing again and vote for an option that keeps us at Holman. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, please. Just state your name, please.
Hello, my name is Steve Evans. I live in the Magnolia Ridge neighborhood. I'm the proud father of my 14-year-old daughter who attends Glen Allen High School. She's a straight A student, she works really hard. We moved into the neighborhood this past June. We were looking at the different places we could move in the area. We could have moved anywhere, and we tasked our daughter with doing some research, because that's how she is, and she did that. And she came back with Henrico, Glen Allen High School, and she gave us the reasons why, the academic reasons, the community, the colors of the, you know, the teams, everything. And so she was very much a participant in our house search and decision to move to Magnolia Ridge. After we moved in, then I then realized that there was a redistricting effort in place. I should have probably checked that out. But once we did move into the neighborhood, I was really impressed by the community. It's very diverse economically, you know, racially, everything. There's just a great neighborhood, all kinds of people there. My daughter's getting to know people. She loves everyone she's met and has become part of that community in just this short time. I was very surprised at how fast that happened. Very impressed with the school, very impressed with everything. So I guess what I want to say to you is that I understand there's a lot of complexities involved with redistricting, and that there's a lot of options and there's a lot of work being done by the committee. What I was not impressed with was that there were no options for Magnolia Ridge to stay in the current districts. And that, as other people have said, and I'm not going to try and say everything they said so well, it just seems like that we're not being heard. Our voice isn't being heard on that committee. I heard at least one person mention that there's nobody on the secondary committee from that neighborhood, and even though I gather there were a number of people who did apply. So that was, you know, unfortunate, I guess. So we're not getting that representation there. So I just want to make sure that if you could, I would ask you to consider to guide the committee to make those considerations for the neighborhood, draw some options that might keep Magnolia Ridge in the Glen Allen District. And I just appreciate all of your hard work and everything you've done. Again, the school district, Henrico, seems like a great school district despite the other challenges, and Glen Allen in particular is a high school, seems fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is John Gregg. I'm a resident in Magnolia Ridge. We've been there for 18 years. So I have three daughters. My oldest is a sophomore at Virginia Tech. My middle daughter is a junior at Glen Allen, and my youngest is a freshman at Glen Allen. My girls have spent their entire lifetimes in Magnolia Ridge. We are a community. The only schools we have ever known are Greenwood, Hungry Creek, and Glen Allen. The current six options tell us that's over. There is not even a chance that these kids in our community can stay in these schools. No options. If no options come before you that show us staying in those schools, then it is, it's over. These kids are being torn up by the roots, and there's nothing we can do about it. So what I would ask is, please, we need some additional options that at least give us a chance to stay in Greenwood and Hungry Creek and Glen Allen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, come forward. And thank you both for putting your name on the list back there, and if you'll do the same when you're done, sir.
Hi, good evening. My name is John O'Shawb. I live off Greenwood Glen Drive in Glen Allen. I'm a professor of physics at J. Sargent Reynolds Community College. I've been there since 2005, and we moved into our home on Green and Glen in 2006, and it's been wonderful. It's been a great place to live. It's friendly, it's clean, it's safe, which my wife loves, and we don't want anything to change, you know? We want to stay there. But now that I'm reading that there could be a redistricting of the schools, which, as I guess realtors have estimated, that it might lower property values, why should I lose on my home? I worked hard for that home. I worked very hard for that home. So why, you know, it's almost like somebody's saying, "We're just going to take some of your money away," you know, all that, and this is so sudden, that I don't think it's fair, since I've worked so hard. And that's why I don't have a prepared speech. I am overworked. But I just want you to consider the fact that some of us worked very hard for our homes, and that if the values go down, people may leave. And I love my neighbors, so I wouldn't want that to happen. Nothing's ideal, but this neighborhood comes close to it, so thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. If there's any others, please come forward. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Jones. I'm a resident of Greenwood Glen, and I have a daughter who attends Glen Allen High School. I just wanted to make a very quick observation and a request. That is, the observation, I don't, no need to reiterate what everyone else has said very eloquently, I think the cases for new proposals. The observation is that it's really a moral failure, I think, to put forward a set of proposals, not one of which includes the option of allowing students to stay in the currently zoned schools. I think that that, as the speaker, two speakers ago said, you know, really speaks to a done deal, to the deal, to the fact that this really is an exercise in futility for us to kind of come and voice these opinions when the option was never on the table. That's wrong. I think we can, by some calculations, we can say that someone's, of course, has to be affected, but for the same families in the same communities to continuously be affected, that's wrong as well. And so I would really urge you to please reconsider and come forth with proposals that would allow for the continuation of students in their currently zoned schools. The request is that we would have some kind of formal mechanism, some kind of formal response from you. I understand that you're collecting this data, you're receiving this information, but there should be some mechanism for us to know that this has really been taken under serious consideration. Otherwise, again, this is just an exercise in futility for us to come out and appeal to you morally, but to have no process. The process is severely flawed, and that's where I think the failure is. And so that's my observation. Thank you.
Thank you. Young man, if you'd like to speak, please come forward.
Hi, my name is Tristan Hoffman. I live in Magnolia Ridge. I'm a student at Hungry Creek Middle School, and I would just like to address how students in general feel about the matter, because there are all several rumors that spread around schools and stuff, that redistricting and moving from schools, and I'd just like to address that and kind of represent students. I've found that, like, over the past years of my schooling, my personality has changed so much throughout the years of my life. Like, if you ask someone who, I told them the personality that I had in third grade, and then now in seventh, you'd think I'm a completely different person. And I just think, like, that splitting up of friends and sort of social groups because of redistricting can really have a positive or a negative effect on a student's personality, and I would just like to say that. Thank you.
Are there others before we close for the close of public comments portion? Okay, all right. So we will make certain that the comments that were shared with us tonight are shared with the committee as well, and there's, the website is available for you to share your comments, and of course, the committees also have meetings along the way, and the process is such that it works through the committees, and then options will be brought here, and there will be an opportunity then to speak to the school board again once those options are presented. So thank you very much for coming tonight and for sharing with us what is very important to all of us, so thank you. Members of the board, our next, and those of you who have stayed, we welcome you to continue to stay and see the business of the school board. However, on the other hand, we also know that it's a school night, and if you'd like to slip out, and you may have a ways to go, we'll do that now. If you didn't get a chance to sign up, go ahead and do that. So as these folks are leaving, members of the board, the next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Submit.
It's been moved by Mrs. Augmiron. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Pike. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Eyes have it, the minutes are approved. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm recommending that the school board approve the updates to the 2018-2025 strategic plan for Henrico County Public Schools. That was shared with you in the earlier work session.
Yes, thank you very much. As you know, we have reviewed the strategic plan and the changes to the strategic plan, including this afternoon, the work session. With all of that, is there anyone who needs any additional information? If there's not, is there a motion to approve the update to the 2018-through-2025 strategic plan?
So moved.
It's been moved by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Cock. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the next item, I'm requesting your approval for the changes to the 2020-2021 planning guide that was presented earlier in the work session.
Again, this item has been presented and considered and questions answered. Members of the board, is there a motion to approve, what is it, some exciting improvements and changes to the 2020-21 planning guide?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Pike. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Augmiron. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, the planning guide is approved.
Thank you. And for the next item, I'm requesting that the school board award a construction contract to Kenbridge Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $25,115,000 for the Holiday Elementary School expansion or New Brooklyn Area Elementary School.
Thank you so much, and this, of course, goes hand-in-hand with many of the comments we've had. So along with construction comes changes. So, members of the board, is there a motion to approve the award of the construction contract for the Holiday Elementary School expansion slash New Brooklyn Area Elementary School in the amount as relayed by the superintendent?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mrs. Cock. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Reverend Cooper. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the construction begin, the motion passes.
Thank you. Next, I'm requesting approval for the change order proposal to the existing contract with Ebenezer Electric LLC in the amount of $11,067.20 for the electrical service replacement at Mayberry Elementary School.
Members of the board, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve the change order proposal for electrical service at Mayberry Elementary School? Moved by Mr. Pike. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Augmiron. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. And the following items are consent items, which can be taken in a block, and I am requesting approval of the following: acceptance of the monthly financial statement and budgetary status report for the month ending September 30, 2019; acceptance of the monthly financial statement for school nutrition services for the month ending September 30, 2019; approval of pupil transportation employee appointments and releases; and approval of personnel items.
Members of the board, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding approval of the consent items. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Augmiron. All those in favor of adoption of the consent items indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, the items are approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. That concludes items from the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Members of the board, is there any unfinished business or items to be submitted or considered by, that you wish us to consider? How about any new business? There not being any, our next meeting dates are November the 14th is a 2:00 p.m. scheduled work session, which is subject to time being adjusted as necessary. There will be a 5:30 public input session regarding the 2021 annual financial plan, and we will begin our monthly meeting at 6:30 p.m. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.